Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. Supervisor Chairman Bittenger is, I believe, out of town for a church conference, and I do not believe he's calling in, is that correct, Honors Scaff? Okay, so I will be conducting the meeting tonight, and the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll move it. Second, moved by Dietrich, seconded by Nelson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes four to zero. Items two through five constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Number two, approval of the minutes of the July 29th, 2025 meeting. And item B, approval of the minutes of the July 28th, 2025 special meeting. This was a special meeting called by the board to ratify a temporary liquor license for the Woodbury County Fair last Monday, thanks Chairman Bittenger for calling that. What's that Supervisor Hung, you asked how long does it take to process a week-long liquor license from the state? Is that the question? Oh, but if I told you thirty days, would that, would that surprise you?
That would indeed.
Thirty days for a seven-day permit, I don't know, I think we can do better than that. Thankfully, the auditor's office got it expedited on our end, and they had a successful Woodbury County Fair. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas. Item A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Item B, approval of the revised mobile device management policy. And number five, board administration from Heather Van Segal, approval of a notice of property sale resolution for parcel ending in 7003, AKA 611 Ninth Street, for Tuesday, August 19th at 4:35 PM. And that concludes the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second, moved by Supervisor Dietrich, seconded by Nelson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes four to zero. We are a bit of our 4:40 set time for our planning and zoning hearing, so I think we'll jump down to item eight, which is reports on committee meetings. So we'll start with you, Mr. Carper.
No, sir, not today.
Not today, alright, Dave, you got anything for us? Nothing? Supervisor Hung, anything on your end? I don't either, I don't have any good jokes to tell either for the next seven minutes, so I guess we could move on to item nine, citizen concerns. If there's some folks here that would like to raise concerns about something that is not on the agenda, you'd be more than happy to.
Mark, I do have an item.
Sure.
I just wanted to give an update for the citizens on the county jail and the population for the last three months. In April, for specifically the federal inmate population, in April, the average population was ninety-nine, that's when we hit the initial goal of a hundred. And we received a three-hundred-and-seven thousand of revenue for that month. In the month of May, we had an average population of ninety-two and a half, and the revenue was three-hundred-and-three thousand for that month. In the month of June, the average population increased to a hundred-and-forty-one, and we received four-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand of revenue for that month. In the month of July, the average population was a hundred-and-fifty-eight, and the current federal inmate population as of yesterday is a hundred-and-sixty-one. So I know you've been receiving some questions on that, so I just wanted to give an update.
Yes, thank you, Ryan, so that's our budget director, Ryan Erickson. So what the board worked on, when they worked on approving the jail, was that the jail would be large enough that inmates from the federal prison system would be housed there, and the payment for housing those inmates would pay for the bond, so that the taxpayers never actually paid for the jail. And so to do that, we needed between a hundred and a hundred-and-ten federal inmates, month to month. And so in April, we averaged ninety-nine, May ninety-two and a half, June a hundred-and-forty-one, July a hundred-and-fifty-eight, and we're currently at one sixty-one. So, that is great, as long as we can stay north of a hundred-and-ten, is pretty conservative, we'll be in good shape, so, thank you for that, Ryan, I appreciate that. I did have several questions about that, everybody was wondering where the population was. We typically have between around two-hundred-and-twenty-five, two-hundred-and-thirty of our own county inmates in there, so, not counting federal inmates. Alright, thank you, any other citizen concerns?
Mr. Chair, I can fill some time if you'd like to.
Absolutely.
Give an update about the special election. So tomorrow is the start of absentee-in-person voting at the courthouse, so individuals can come to the auditor's office and vote absentee in person. Also, tomorrow, we will be mailing the ballots out that we've already received the requests for. We've had a little over a thousand requests, so those will go out tomorrow in the mail, we'll have them all stuffed and ready. It was a really short turnaround to get the ballots printed, because we just knew the order of the candidates on Friday afternoon. Got ahold of our vendor on Monday, so between yesterday at noon and today, about forty-five minutes ago, we received all our absentee ballots. So, very appreciative of our vendors out there, and we have our envelopes all ready to go, so those are set to go out in the mail tomorrow. We'll be holding three satellite voting locations, and I know I mentioned this before, but I'll mention it again, because it's important. If individuals from precincts one through twenty-two, which is the area of the special election, would like to vote in-person absentee at a satellite location, we'll have one on Monday, August 18th, from 1:00 PM till 7:00 PM at the Carpenter's Union on West Nineteenth Street. There'll be one on August 20th, on Wednesday, at the Sioux City Community Theater at 1401 Riverside Boulevard, and that will be from 1:00 PM till 7:00 PM. And on Saturday, the 23rd, we'll have at Long Lines, a satellite location from 9:00 AM till 3:00 PM. So individuals from any one of those precincts, one through twenty-two, can go to any one of those locations and vote. Also, as I said, they can come into the auditor's office to vote. Still have a couple minutes?
Yeah. I was just gonna ask if people have never voted in an election before, have questions, where should they go to get some information?
So they can register to vote, they can call 279-6465 to the auditor's elections area and discuss that. They can register to vote through the 11th to vote in this election. And we do have same-day registration, so if they don't register by the 11th, they can still vote absentee, register that day and vote. And so we will be accepting individuals who want to have their ballots mailed through August 11th. So after August 11th, we no longer will accept a request to have a ballot mailed. So those individuals that maybe didn't have a chance to ask for a ballot to be mailed can still come into the courthouse and vote absentee ahead of the election. And on August 26th, the day of the election, those individuals have to go to their polling location. That about sums it up.
Okay. Thank you, Honors Scaff. We have 439, which I think is close enough. Dan Priestley, if you want to come up and give us started, I know this is our third hearing, but if you've got anything new to share, or just want to, you know, explain to any newcomers here tonight, that'd be great.
Yeah, Dan Priestley, zoning coordinator, I just want to again point out that the nuclear discussions for nuclear energy facilities and nuclear waste storage are to have an ordinance framework that will be put into place to facilitate any type of future applications. This is not for a specific plant, it's for having a framework in place. And I think some of the items that we might recall from the last couple meetings, it's a good idea to have an ordinance framework in place to facilitate the projects. The commission found some deficiencies as far as notification area, lack of definitions. We had the term electrical energy generation not including wind, which is quite vague, meaning an application could be still submitted, then we would be up for interpreting it. So it's kind of better to have some items in place that we can get around for demonstrating to the public that there's a process and a procedure, if there's an application to come through. So expanding the public notification zone to ten miles, I think is much better than the five-hundred feet and the existing conditional use, and of course defining it. But other than that, don't have a whole lot more to add.
Thank you, Dan, I think you talked about this at the first meeting, but this came, this item came about in July, like week one of July last year, was sent to the zoning department, or the zoning commission, and you guys had six public hearings throughout the year leading up to this, or something? I can't remember how many, but several public hearings and notices, and so this is kind of the last, the last hurrah. So with that, we will open this up to the, the public for comment. If you come up to speak, please speak clearly into the microphone and state your name, you'll be given three minutes to speak, and I just ask that you speak loudly and clearly, and, yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm Gerald Iverson, 3430 Concordia Drive, here in Sioux City. We've owned homes and paid property taxes in Sioux City for fifty years. I was on the team fundraiser when we put KWIT, Public Radio, on the air in 1981. I'm a minister of word and service in the Lutheran Church, and I happen to have three master's degrees. Now I'm telling you all this not to brag, I'm telling you that because we are a well-educated, well-informed family. And if you decide to advance this plan, even if it's just zoning, we plan to leave the area permanently, and we will urge others to do the same, our friends, our families, our associates, because we feel that it's just too dangerous. Thank you for your consideration.
Rita Iverson, 3430 Concordia Drive. Today, I'm discussing information from previous meetings. First, the US has ninety-two nuclear plants. Incorrect, the US has fifty-three active plants and forty-one closed plants. Omaha and Sioux Falls have closed their plants. Number two, US nuclear plants are safe. Incorrect, there have been fifty-seven documented nuclear plant accidents, human error or equipment failures. Number three, the government will put a plant here in Sioux City even if the zoning isn't finished. Incorrect, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission is the federal agency that licenses nuclear plants. Their website states, quote, "A new plant must have correct zoning requirements and permits, be supported by the public, and pass an environmental study. Even if the zoning is correct, large public objections to the power plant can stop the process." Number four, we can purchase a small modular reactor, or SMR. Incorrect, Russia is the only country in the world with a functioning SMR. Concerns about SMRs. SMRs use uranium. Uranium waste is radioactive for 4.5 billion years. Expensive upfront costs, SMR's predicted cost is nine billion dollars. The public will have higher electric bills to cover the SMR. Iowa's severe weather, tornadoes, and floods impact safety. The Missouri River is affected, dead fish, harmed ecosystem. People may move away or avoid moving here. Property values will decline within a fifty-mile radius. Thieves of uranium happen in the US, and terrorists use uranium to create weapons. If an accident happens, public health will be impacted in fifteen Sioux land counties. Radioactive particles land on farmers' fields. Radioactive particles travel south on the river. I asked people in civic groups how they felt about having a nuclear plant in Sioux land. Two voted yes, seventy-six voted no. But I have some good news. Norway successfully uses generators in their rivers and lakes to create eighty-eight percent of the country's electricity. And remember, wind, sunlight, and water are free. Thank you very much.
Mode of receive. Is that second, Dave? Oh, seconded by, motion by Nelson, seconded by Carper, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. carries four zero, would you please pass that down to Honors Scaff, please? Mode of receive.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Carries four to zero, let's see.
My name is Craig Levine, I'm the president of North Westside Building Trades, represent quite a few thousand members, workers, on the side of Iowa. Dear Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, I'm writing to show our support for an important initiative in our community, rezoning industrial space to allow nuclear energy production. As energy demands continue to rise, and the need for cleaner and more sustainable sources of power becomes increasingly urgent, it is essential that we explore all viable options for securing our energy future. Nuclear energy, which has proven track record of providing reliable low-carbon electricity, is a critical component of this transition. Currently, many industrial areas are underutilized, and repurposing the space for nuclear energy production, including small modular reactors, present on the opportunity to drive economic growth, create jobs, and contribute to greener energy portfolio in Woodbury County. By rezoning these areas, we can ensure that nuclear energy is integrated into the community as a safe, environmentally responsible manner. The benefit of nuclear energy extends far beyond just providing reliable energy sources. It can help us reduce our carbon footprint and mitigate the impact of climate change, all while sustaining local economic through carbon creation, or through job creations, technology innovations, and new infrastructure development. Furthermore, by sponsoring, supporting this initiative, we'll be aligning ourselves with the forward-thinking policies that prioritize sustainable energy solutions for future generations. We believe that our organization's influence and the commitment to community environmental issues, sustainable growth, innovation, would be powerful voice in advocating the rezoning, the initiative. With the support, we can help ensure the benefits of nuclear energy by realized, well, addressing our community's needs for economic development, energy security, environmental responsibility. I kindly ask for your record of our endorsement of this effort, that would be happy to discuss in details further at your convenience. Together, we can make meaningful steps towards cleaner, more sustainable energy future in the community. Thank you for the time and consideration, I look forward to the possibilities working together and making initiatives reality. One thing I would also ask, the wind, and the water, and all that stuff, especially solar, is not very effective. It's a nice pipe dream, but it's not very sustainable for long-term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I appreciate your allowing us to make comments. My name is Renee Weinberg, 3905 Country Club Boulevard. The NRC certified the first US small modular reactor, and they are the only, they've only certified one, and that is, the company is New Scale Power. I have a picture of that, which I will share with you, it's small enough to fit on a container, you know, one of those containers that they put on the ships. The problem with it is, it did have its first planned project, but after the construction budget, it exploded from 5.5 billion dollars to 9.3 billion dollars. That's even more expensive per kilowatt hour than the main Vogel reactors, which are the old-type large reactors that have been built in this country. The New Scale Power, their small modular reactor is, uses fission. Fission is the problem, that is the problem, it's not the fact that it makes great energy. The problem is the waste, and the waste takes millions of years to be safe. There is no national depository for this waste. The Yucca Mountain site was proposed, and the people of Nevada went crazy, because they do not want an entire depository of this material in their state. So they, I'll let you know that the existing power plants that are nuclear, they have these rods that are in water, and there's only so many rods that can be in each plant. And the problem, if the power goes down in a nuclear reactor, they have to have backup power. And if you did not know this, most nuclear power plants, their backup power is solar, which is pretty interesting when you say that it's not reliable. So, there's no plan, no plan for the permanent storage, it's a fission, because you guys keep talking about a small modular reactor. If you don't know anything about nuclear fission plants, the, the radioactivity, like I said, lasts for millions of years. The fight against Yucca Mountain, I have a sheet that I'll share with you. People always say that national security is good with nuclear reactors. It doesn't make America safer putting it in a mountain, it makes one position where it could be blown up, you know, with all of the concerns nowadays with terrorists. They're also, spent fuel is also being kept in dry storage, there are vertical tanks that are on top of the ground, and that's going to require our government to be around for two or three hundred years in order to maintain that safety. So, I'm dead-set against this. I was in Sioux Falls when the Sioux Falls reactor was built, when I was young, yes, I am dead-old. And it was closed due to operating costs. The one in Omaha was closed due to flooding with the river, considering that we're having more and more environmental problems.
Renee, you're up against the three minutes, if you could just finish.
It could cause problems, so I will leave this with you.
Mode of receive.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Carper, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries four zero. Thank you.
My name is Joanne Sadler, and I want to just start by addressing some things that were said at the last week's hearing. The setbacks for the wind turbines was not addressed until the county had an application, or the Mid-America was proposing a wind farm. So the fact that we need to do this before we have an application, doesn't make sense to me. Also, with the commercial solar, that was not addressed until there was an actual applicant. The land use tables do not address nuclear production or storage, so only after adopting this amendment would nuclear really be allowed. It was also stated last week that the federal government controls the whole thing, and the Woodbury County would have no say. Well, that's not true. I have this slide from Lynn County, that breaks down what the federal role is and the local role, and I'll leave that with you. There are also states that have moratoriums on nuclear plants, including Minnesota. So they, from like the 1990s, they no longer allow any new nuclear. It was also, a nuclear was also compared to CO2 pipeline in Shelby County, and, you know, I don't see any comparison between CO2 and nuclear. I was here addressing the board when the CO2 was discussed, and, you know, you, you all said that there were lawsuits in other counties, so you weren't, you didn't have any power, and it was a state issue, which is, you know, what has indeed happened. So, there is no comparison, because we, we know there is local control in the zoning for nuclear. The next thing I wanted to bring up was just the agenda you, you have for tonight's meeting. Six C says, "Adopt the zoning ordinance." I think that that should say, "You will discuss, deliberate, consider, and adopt or deny." You are saying by your agenda that you have already determined you're going to adopt this, without listening to anyone's concerns. And I don't think that's right. You should listen to people, and, you know, there's the four of you up here, we're going to make a decision that affects over a hundred thousand people in our county, not to mention other counties and other states. If you put this right along the river, which it would probably be, because it requires so much water, just right across the river from Nebraska. Okay, so I was going to talk about the SMRs, so there are none of those in Iowa. In my research, I found that there were three in the world, Russia, China, and a test reactor in Japan. So this is not proven technology. If this was such a wonderful thing, we'd have these all over the United States. So it's, it's very much in its infancy, they are expensive, they are costing way more than they're projected, they're taking way more time than they originally thought, which might ring some bells with the problems we've had with our law enforcement center, costing more, taking more time, not always a great idea.
Joanne, we're up against the three minutes here.
Okay, so I just want to say one other thing. If you look at like the Des Moines metro area, they have all those data standards, they don't have coal, they don't have nuclear. So wind and solar are providing their needs. So I ask you to deny this adoption of the zoning, the zoning ordinance.
Anybody else want to get up and speak?
Hello, my name is Lauren White, and I live at 1219 26th Street in Sioux City, Iowa, and I've lived here my whole life. Last year, I got to work as the Energy Efficiency Coordinator for Green Iowa Mayor Corps, which is like the Peace Corps, but environmental in Iowa. And I got the great opportunity to do not only research for them, but help the people who need energy efficiency and their rates cut the most, which is disabled people, elderly people, people who are underprivileged in Iowa. And I just want to say that clean energy, as in, and in these regulations around solar and wind in Woodbury County, I think was a big mistake. Not only is wind in Iowa have the potential to be the greatest in the country, it's second right now. It brings jobs, it brings, I mean, it's safe, we don't have to worry about, I mean, just look at the news. We have water quality issues that are creeping up on us, and we're, we have to address that eventually. And nuclear reactors, we don't have the money or the time to invest in something like this. It would just be a waste when we have these resources right in front of us, and there are great grants, and you, there's, so, one of the most interesting things that I got to experience was talk to farmers who were, you know, kind of on the table about having wind and solar on their land. And, but then they learned about the benefits of like additional tax revenue that they can get by having them, and utilizing our land use in a way that not only benefits farmers, but isn't an eyesore, whatever you say it is, to other people. It's important. I just want to say that I also have some Center for Rural Affairs information about the successes of, of clean energy and practices in Iowa, and how much money they've brought. But with that, thank you, and I hope that you would vote no. And I hope that you would vote no to this ordinance. Thank you.
Move to receive?
Second.
Motion by Nelson, second by Carper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign. carries four zero. Thank you. Move to receive?
Second.
All those, motion by Nelson, second by Carper, I believe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign. carries four zero. Anybody else? Don't be shy. Oh, now you got to arm wrestle.
Hi again. Good evening. I am Brianna Koma and I'm here on behalf of Iowa Chapter of Sierra Club and our members here in Woodbury County. I first wanted to say thank you again for holding these hearings and allowing the community to have a voice on this matter. I hope that you truly do listen to them and hear their issues. And I'm here, obviously, about the decisions that you're about to make around the zoning and how it'll shape the future of this county, not just for the industry, but for the families, farmers, and generations to come. I urge you to vote no on zoning changes that would allow the construction or siting of nuclear reactors and nuclear waste storage in Woodbury County. And today, I want to focus on four key issues: public health, energy myths, and water use and zoning policies. In 2002, peer-reviewed study in Archive of Environmental Health found something deeply disturbing. When nuclear power plants were shut down across the US, there were clear and measurable health improvements in the nearby communities. Infant mortality rates dropped by 15 to 20% and childhood cancer rates also declined within, within just two years of the plant closures. This wasn't a study about disasters. These were normal operating plants. That means when nothing goes wrong, just through routine emissions, nuclear plants still expose nearby residents to harmful radioactive isotopes like strontium-90 and iodine-131. These particles end up in our air, our soil, and our food. Babies and young children are the most vulnerable. Their developing bodies absorb more radiation per pound than adults. Do you really want to take this risk? And then there's a source below. Second, the myth of baseload nuclear for big industry and tech. We've heard a lot about nuclear being necessary to attract data centers or manufacturers and that wind and solar can't meet their energy needs, but that's simply not supported by facts. Google, Microsoft, and Meta all operate major data centers here in Iowa today, powered by wind and solar energy we've already, we already have, which you've heard from others today as well. They buy power through the regional grid and use clean energy contracts, not, not local nuclear plants. They aren't asking for nuclear. They're asking for clean, fast, scalable energy. And they want it now, not in 10 to 15 years when an SMR might be online if it gets built. Let's not tie our local economy to an energy solution that's speculative, could cause delays, and is risky, especially when clean energy is working here today. Third, the massive use of water usage. Nuclear power is one of the most water-intensive energy sources on the planet. Cooling even a small modular reactor requires millions of gallons of water per day, depending on the design, of course. And we're in a time of worsening droughts, nitrate contaminations, and water scarcity. Approving nuclear zoning could place severe pressure on our rivers, wells, and farm water supply. And a reactor is located near the Missouri River. What happens during a flood or heat wave? We've already seen climate extremes affect power plants nationwide. Let's not create a new strain on crucial resources just to chase an energy option. Lastly?
Okay. Cool. I have the rest of my speech if I can give it to you guys.
Sure. No. Move to receive?
Second.
Move by Nelson, second by Carper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign. carries four zero. Thank you.
Doyle Turner, 2738 200th Street, Mobile. You know, it's, it's kind of unfortunate that the counties are put in the position that they're put in. There was not actually a comparison between CO2 and nuclear in the previous meeting. There was a, a realization that counties that did not change their zoning before a project came to them, found themselves unable to change that zoning. There are a lot of protections in the, in what you have in front of you that you won't have if you don't pass this. One of the simple ones is you have to inform people 10 miles out. You know, that, that seems really simple, but if we don't do it now and something happens, you won't have the legal authority to make it happen. These are just little things. I appreciate the fact that the county is seeing, looking down the road at what might happen, and they're preparing to protect the people of Woodbury County. The, the position that it puts the county in is you have to anticipate may what come at you. And with technology and everything changing ever faster all the time, it is all that much harder to anticipate what's going to happen. So I really, I feel for the position that our county leaders are put in because you have to try and outguess people on what they're going to ask from you. Otherwise, you may not be able to represent your people to their fullest ability. I thank you for considering this and I hope that you'll pass it.
Hello, I'm Bob Fritzmeier and I just, I've heard a lot of speakers here and I wonder if you do go ahead and pass this, would it prove that you already had your minds made up before you actually listened to the people who were speaking today? And I would like to submit a document to you.
Move to receive?
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Carper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign. carries four zero.
And I'd like to read this, please. You've got a picture here of Ray Grazer, who's a lifelong farmer from Corning, Iowa. This appeared in the Sioux City Journal last week and it's titled, "Converse/Conserve Ag Resources With Solar Energy." Now, Ray Grazer is a lifelong farmer from Corning, Iowa. He's a chair of the Iowa Conservative Energy Forum, a nonprofit organization that advocates for clean, affordable, and reliable energy statewide. He is advocating for solar because the farmers in our state, you know, need alternatives. The farming is changing, just like many things in our, in our state, our nation, right here in Woodbury County are changing. He says that the solar can, can provide a stable income for farmers who have been, it may make the difference between handing down a family farm or selling it off, because solar installations on farms already here in Iowa have provided an income where there was residual farmland that was not really that good for agriculture and crops. He points out that Iowa now ranks first in the nation for energy competitiveness, according to a recent tribute, report from the Common Sense Institute. I'm glad he mentions common sense because we have wind and solar, or wind and sunshine outside today. And most days here in Iowa, there is sunshine. And I would ask you to please, just each day, today, just, just today, when you step outside, enjoy the sunshine. Enjoy the breeze out there that runs the turbines and gives clean energy. And I'd like to also thank the man who came here to speak about jobs. As far as wind and solar go, there would be lots of jobs that would be provided here in Iowa. I talked to a friend today who is in the solar business here in, in Siouxland area. He said it took him only a year to get certification so that he could install solar safely. And it's a, it's a kind of energy where at the end of the road, when those solar panels have run their, their life, they can be disposed of in a safe manner. There isn't that nuclear uranium, that waste, that lasts and is a danger for thousands of years.
Bob, you're up against your three minutes here. Timer went off.
Hi. Jean Carlson, 4020 Sherwood Terrace. I would just like to stand up just to have more voices here saying, "No, please don't do this." I've lived in Sioux City now for about 40 years. My hus, you know, Iowa's cancer rates are either first or second. I've heard both, so I'm not sure if we're the first, which is bad, second's bad, wherever it's, and so we've each had cancer, you know, and so you get these nuclear wastes, you hear stories about the nuclear. The word nuclear, power, you know, upsets some people, including me. And I'd just like to say, you've got one plant that has an ordinance that's closed in Iowa, is that right? That's what this says, anyway. Okay, so there's been one in Litten and so they closed it down, but there's still an ordinance. If you put an ordinance in, as someone mentioned, it's a framework for the future, well, you're just inviting people to come. It's going to be here before you know it. It's like, build it and they will come, you know, with a field of dreams. And I'm just definitely against it for health reasons. I'd like to submit this.
Move to receive?
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Nelson, second by Carper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. carries four zero.
Hello, my name is Lexi McKee-Hemnway. So I think that this conversation actually opens up a much larger door for other conversations around our energy mix, our energy dependency, and energy crisis, all of these things to do with our energy. So there's been a couple comments that I just want to clarify and see how this all drives together. So last week it said, someone said, "If this is passed, it will take at least 10 to 15 years to put nuclear in regardless." But then additional comments were made in some of these weeks. They've said something along the lines of, "We only have coal for another 10 years," or "We have some sort of coal plant generation for 10 more years," and then, I don't know, that comment didn't go anywhere else. So then that leaves five years of no energy generation in this county if we're working off of that framework. So I'd love some clarification on that. But we also are saying here, everyone has cited, "There is clearly an energy crisis happening." We have an issue with our jobs as well, that we aren't making enough jobs. We don't have enough here in Woodbury County. Also, that the lack of energy generation is scaring people away. So again, this is opening the door up for conversations around wind and solar. So why don't we have an ordinance that allows for more wind and solar if this is a huge crisis that we keep on bringing up over and over and over again? Now we have 2,000 to 3,000-foot setbacks, which is way above the average in our state, which is around 11 or 1,200 feet setbacks instead. So I'm just wondering why we don't do that as a county. It's a smart move. It's an easy move. And then my last question is, where exactly will these small modular reactors be placed? And I have seen where communities have then transitioned old coal plants into small modular reactors. So then we also have the issue of having to worry about coal ash and coal leachate. And how are we going to store that when we also have to store all these, this nuclear waste as well and building it? So these are just some concerns that I have, but also some observations just about our energy. Like, what are we going to do with those five years if that's exactly what's happening? But it's interesting. There's also a couple facts right here about wind and solar in Iowa. I would just please ask you guys to consider that, if this is truly a crisis and that this is making Woodbury County unattractive and that we don't have enough jobs, that we consider to look at that rezoning for wind and solar then. So, thank you.
Move to receive?
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Carper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign. carries four zero.
I was going to make this short. My name is Madonna Nitski. I live at 2500 South Lion Street. Since attending these meetings regarding rezoning for a possible nuclear plant is brought to my mind the city's vote for the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center and New Jail. That law center in New Jail was recommended, it was voted on, and supported by our citizens. I voted for the law enforcement center for various reasons and for the New Jail, but mainly because I wanted to support our police department and the sheriff's office. Society wants law in order. That was in 2020 and today, we are being sued for breach of contract. The contractor alleges millions of dollars are owed them. Believe me when I say, I hope you win and resolve this matter out of court. Wherever it lands us today, talking about this site and now building a nuclear plant has me very concerned. You are hearing from your constituents, your neighbors, about the clear dangers of building a nuclear plant and dangers of nuclear waste. Farmers, businesspeople, retirees have said they don't want this for sound and rational They are thinking not only of this generation, but future generations. So what you decide is very, very important for your children and what their legacy is going to be, what your legacy is going to be up here. Thank you.
Any other comments?
In the category we know. My name is Michelle Lemire. I live at 317 BIA Road 3, Winnebago, Nebraska. We live directly downstream or downriver from Port Neal. When the Port Neal anhydrous ammonia tank exploded, the ammonia cloud went directly to Winnebago, directly to our homes. I was a firefighter at the time and I spent that whole night evacuating my relatives. And we stayed there while, after we sent our people to safety, emergency services personnel stayed there in harm's way to keep our people's homes safe and to look out for anybody that wouldn't leave. Now it looks like we're going to be downriver again, and that's unacceptable. You guys are talking about keeping Woodbury County people safe. You're not the only ones that are going to be affected here. You need to consider what's going to happen when things go wrong. Anything that's built man-made will break eventually. I heard other people mention all the huge benefits of clean energy. Where's, where's the rush to invest in that? It's not going to harm anybody. It's going to help to address your climate crisis or your energy crisis. And, you know, it's good for the environment. I teach a dual-language classroom. I have nine handpicked students that I I have nine handpicked students that I teach language and culture to, and I take them to the river all the time because I teach them about our traditional plants and medicines, and also the animals and the wetlands. And it would, it would be devastating to the children that I teach if we weren't able to go down there anymore safely. And as it is with the pollution that's there already, when they talk about going fishing, I say, okay, go fishing, just don't eat the fish. So I urge you to reconsider whatever decision. It sounds like you've already made your decision, but I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tyler Lemire. I'm also at 317 BIA Road 3. I'm a college student and youth delegate for the Winnebago Tribe. I come from the Bear Clan, the clan of justice and civil order. One thing that we as Winnebago people have been struggling with is pollution. Pollution in our water, pollution in our air, pollution in our ground. We aren't able to practice our cultural traditions or live off the land anymore because of how much pollution has been caused by energy plants, multiple. The meat plants and the energy plants have affected us so greatly that 90% of Winnebago families have at least one person in their family with cancer. I, there are 47% of those families have had five or more of their family members with cancer caused by pollution. Another plant, such as a nuclear waste plant, would be devastating for us. We have only two fluent speakers left of our language. When we lose a language, we lose our entire people, we lose our entire culture. We are no longer indigenous. All of our fluent speakers are elders. If this plant were to be brought here, because all the pollution ends up going to Winnebago and Omaha Nation, it would be devastating for our people, for our land, for our community to become pretty much extinct as Winnebago people. I urge you to reconsider your decision because this could result in an unintentional genocide of Winnebago people. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'm going again. I'm Lauren White. I forgot to talk about Nebraska, our good neighbor. So I got to work with-
Order of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I think that we'd have to suspend the rules to allow someone to talk a second time, is that correct, Auditor Scav?
Yes.
Is there any pleasure in suspending the rules? I have none. Sorry.
I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich Hall. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item B is to approve the third and final reading of the zoning ordinance text amendments. And then item C would be the adopt or deny. Correct, Dan? Okay. So I guess we have discussion typically during item C. Certified County Supervisor Ong?
We've done both.
Okay. I would, I guess I would open it up for discussion for item B here. I'd like to answer, and I can't remember this young lady's name back here sitting next to you, Bob, but I'd like to answer if you had some good questions, so I thought I'd answer some of those. So what we're hearing is that Port Neal could be phased out by 2035, in 10 years. 10 to 15 years is typical time to build a traditional nuclear energy system. We don't know, I mean, I don't know certainly if any traditional nuclear systems will be built ever again in the United States. I think there'll be some sort of modular or shrunk-down size. We also know that there is an energy crisis across the United States, and I think that this administration is looking at using executive orders to fast-track the development of large-scale industrial power. So if with traditional regulations and the slowness, if 10 to 15 years maybe a fast-track would cut that in half, that I don't know. Will a declaration ever happen? I don't know either. But that's certainly something that's being talked about nationally. Google just bought some hydroelectric dams in Pennsylvania a couple of weeks ago to repower for their own power. So there, when Google's getting into the energy business, there's obviously a massive shortage, right? So then you asked about, you know, the potential lapse in power, and that's why I think that we're talking about this, which leads to your third question, was why not wind and solar? And I think that what originally began, I know this was Supervisor Raddick's agenda item over a year ago, but the original thought was that if Port Neal coal phases out, what is going to be that next industrial power that's going to not only power Sioux City, Woodbury County, but the surrounding area? And for me, I thought that nuclear could be a substitution for coal. We've obviously had a lot of complaints about coal in my three years on the board. What I didn't see coming was that there'd be this argument for renewables to take place of coal, and it's just not possible. Okay? So right now, if you would go to MISO's website, which is the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, what MISO is, is they run the grid. They're the planning and zoning of the grid across the United States, and it's broken up into regions, so we're the mid-cont. Okay, the states in our region of the grid are Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Michigan, parts of Illinois, parts of Indiana, some parts of North Dakota, South Dakota, parts of Missouri, Arkansas, kind of that little sliver right through there. Okay? If you go to their website, if you want to build anything in this area, whether that's solar, wind, a transmission line, a coal plant, a nuke plant, a dam, it all starts with them, long before it would ever come to us. Okay? On their website, and it's right on the homepage, it's really nice to find, they have a fuel mix that shows you what power is being, how much power is being put on the grid, and what that power source is. Okay? And it's updated every five minutes, 24 hours a day. So I'll refresh it here. So right now, there, just, and this is just in our portion of the grid, there's 106,255 megawatts being put on the grid. Of that 106,000, a short 20,000 of that is renewables, wind and solar. So not even 20%. And what's happening is, and if you watch this, and I urge you to watch this, at night, solar will actually go negative. Solar installations will actually take power off the grid because they don't operate at night, but you still have all these electrical functions that have to generate. So if you watch at night, solar will actually go negative. And wind, we're told from folks who build wind farms, that they run about 50% of the hours in a year. Solar in Iowa is about 25% efficient. So a 300-megawatt modular nuclear will crank out 300 megawatts of power 24/7/365, unless they're down for maintenance. A 300-megawatt solar farm will probably crank out 300 megawatts from the hours of 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So then what do you do the rest of the time? You have to scale. Okay? Same with wind. Same with wind. You have to have wind, if it's only blowing 50% of the time, it's not generating electricity the other half. The problem becomes storage. You cannot store that energy cheap enough for large industrial uses. And that's the problem that we're facing across the country, is that you still have to have that base power, which comes from hydroelectric, coal, nuclear, natural gas, in order to power these things. And that kind of goes into your comment there. You talked about Facebook and Meta using wind energy. It's kind of a play on words, because what they're doing is the wind and solar energy goes to power our homes, which is a very minor tax on the grid, and they buy the credits. So on paper, they're using wind and solar energy. But the reality of it is, it's coal, nat gas, or nuclear. The power plant in Council Bluff's a coal plant, that whole plant powers just Google and Omaha. And I think that that's where we're struggling, is wrapping our heads around how much energy some of these are using. The new Facebook data center that's built between Springfield, Nebraska, and Bellevue, Nebraska, uses more electricity than the entire city of Gretna on a daily basis. And you can't do that with wind or solar. You just cannot. You just cannot. Developers of wind and solar tell us this, ma'am. And so if we lose coal here in Woodbury County and we don't have another alternative for utility-grade generation, it will cost serious economic harm to Sioux City and the surrounding area. I'm an REC customer in rural Woodbury County. My power comes from North Dakota, and I think we pay the second-highest utility rate in the state of Iowa. Because it comes from so far away, it passes through so many hands. It is not affordable to live in rural Woodbury County and pay your electric bill. It is not. And so that's, I hope that answers some of your questions, but that's where this is coming from. And I would urge you to talk to wind and solar developers, like Nextera, who's trying to build a nuclear plant. Biggest solar developer in the United States is trying to build a nuclear plant. Mid-American Energy, who builds wind and solar all across the United States. They're building a natural gas plant to power those Google data centers in Adair, right outside Des Moines. They just announced what's going to be the biggest natural gas plant in the state of Iowa, and that's to power that stuff. So we're not trying to make this, I'm certainly not trying to make this a nuclear versus green energy. That's not what this is about. It's how do we replace coal in the politicization of that type of energy? Because we have nothing but complaints about it. It's hard for Mid-American or any other company to run it, for that matter, because one administration comes in, they regulate the crap out of it. Another administration comes in, they lax, and it just goes back and forth. I wouldn't want to operate a business that way. I tried to operate a business like that during COVID with the shutdowns, and I said, I'm done. I have to know that I can be in business tomorrow. Right? And so that's how I look at that. I certainly hope that that answers some of your questions, and I would encourage you to go onto MISO and look at what's being put on the grid. I think it's, it's hard to fathom what, what industry is using for power, and where it has to come from, and the magnitude of that power. But that's my comments. I'll pass it on to any of the fellow supervisors. And I would like to say, I know Joanne Sather left, but as far as item C with the adopt or deny, I do believe that she is correct on that, and I certainly do not know where any of my colleagues are at on this issue. We have not predetermined. But as we go forward, we have lots of, if you can see, we have another zoning issue next, and that item C is the same way, adopt the zoning ordinance, and that should probably be adopt and deny. So that is something that we can definitely fix going forward. There's nothing that was predetermined here tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to comments from my colleagues.
I guess, you know, we're just looking at the zoning ordinance framework. We're not working with a, a company. We're not having a company come in here, or they're not looking at land or anything like that at this point. This is just the framework. And yes, I want to say that, you know, give some credit to former supervisor Keith Raddick, because he was the one that initiated this. And so we would have to go through the Department of Energy, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, we'd have to go through federal laws, laws for the state of Iowa before this could even be built. So it would be a long ways out if it even came to Woodbury County. Also, looking at wind power, there's 1,005 farms in Woodbury County. And if you put up a windmill on each, each one of those farms, look how much land, productive land, that you would lose from those farms. And there's 423,507 acres for cropland in Woodbury County, but still, you would lose over 1,000 acres of productive land in Woodbury County. So that's all I have to say.
I just appreciate everybody, you know, being here the last three weeks and voicing your concerns and everything like that, and hearing from you. I appreciate the zoning commission as well for going through a very lengthy process on this and bringing this before us with nothing in our ordinances at all about nuclear. So a couple of things from the background here. It basically says, you know, the proposed ordinance does not authorize any new, new nuclear plants or storage facilities. So that's number one. So obviously, there's, there's a very lengthy process, even if anything would come up. And it could come up even if we don't pass this ordinance. But the other, another key point in here, key benefits of this ordinance, for the public here, ensuring transparency, transparency and public input through the conditional use permit process. So if anybody does come here, it would be very open and transparent. It's not going to be hidden, it's not going to be behind closed doors and stuff like that. So I appreciate the zoning commission for going through this with a fine-tooth comb, through a very lengthy process of listening to the public as well on this.
I do want to address first the concern about the 6C saying adopt. That's actually not a problem. Our whole agenda has adopt, conduct, approve, because you have to have a proposal to come forward to discuss. It's not normal parliamentary procedure to move to deny or move to not do things. Like, we don't show up and say, I moved to not have a meeting. You know, we, we have approval of the agenda, not approval or denial, because we can always deny, and we have denied lots of things that say approval. So firstly, I want to thank again the zoning and the Board of Justice members for their time. 12-plus public meetings on this is where the more cerebral discussions on this topic take place. We on the board do get into the weeds a little bit, but they really get into the weeds in these meetings. And so that's why it's appreciated, it's appreciated by me, and I believe the board, and if there's input there that makes it here, that, that carries a little more weight with me. If someone's come and brought something up before those meetings, and then they come to this board meeting, again, that, that speaks a little more strongly to me. So I appreciate those that have taken that step, and those in the audience that have been serving on those boards and commissions. Secondly, the concern about the timing of this, yeah, it's, it's, it's a bit far off as far as the time of an actual construction project. That said, I do think it's more fair to do it now. There were comments made about the process on wind and those hearings. We obviously amended that ordinance a couple of times, and in hindsight, it might have been better to do that a little farther ahead of time. A lot of people might have felt it was a little more fair of a process, particularly when they were engaging with these companies at the same time.
And to strengthen your point, Matthew, the wind did not go through the zoning process like we have here.
Absolutely. That's another good point. So earlier, it would have been better. I mean, point taken. And that's why we're doing this. Thirdly, we don't know exactly when the energy grid will struggle meaningfully or even break down if we did. I mean, I don't know why you would expect us to know the exact time that things are going to break down, especially when there's technologies that haven't been tested in different ways and different weather patterns before. So we're, we're giving this our best estimate and talking to industry leaders as well, but if we're looking five, 10, 15 years out, none of us are going to be up here and say exactly year 12 is when this is going to break down, there's going to be no power, the light switches are not going to work, that's not how we approach this. We need to be a little bit ahead of that. And then lastly, there are concerns about pollution, which is why we're having this on the table. Because if we want to consider all the options at the time, there will be technological advancements, there will be specifications to argue about in future meetings. That time is not now. There's no this plant right now. There's, there's, there's not a this plant right now. The first comment Chairon Bittenger made at the first public hearing was, this is not a project. And the first public comment, I believe, said, please vote against this project. So again, there is no this plant, there is a this process, which I am supportive of.
I apologize. With that, thank you Supervisor Ong. I would move to approve the third and final reading of the zoning ordinance text amendments. It has been moved by Nelson, seconded by Ong. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Motion carries four to zero. Item C is adopt the zoning ordinance text amendments. And I think you did a nice job explaining that. Thank you. It was even insightful for me. That's great. So adopt the zoning ordinance text amendments ordinance. That's ordinance twice in six words. Good job, Dan. I would move that. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Onto item seven, with planning and zoning, Dan Priestley. Item A, conduct third and final public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance to comply with Iowa Senate File 592, signed into law on May 1st, 2025, which mandates allowing at least one accessory dwelling unit on lots with single-family residences and prohibits certain restrictive regulations necessitating updates to sections like land use summary table, lot requirements, and the number of residential structures.
Yes, this is just really to bring the zoning ordinance up to compliance with what the state law already has in place, which allows for the bill, a building permit for an accessory house. There is a requirement of 1,000 square feet or less, or 50% of the primary dwelling. And so that removes any extra county regulations where we previously had a conditional use permit, so.
All right. Thank you, thank you for that, Dan. So we will go into the public hearing if there's anybody who wants to speak for or against this proposed zoning change.
Seeing none, I move to close.
Second was moved by Dietrich, seconded by Nelson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Carries four to zero. Item B, approve the third and final reading of the zoning ordinance text amendments. I don't think there's a whole lot to discuss. We got to get in compliance with the law, so I would move that.
I'm a second.
Motion by Nelson, same by Dietrich. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Carries four to zero. Item C is adopt the zoning ordinance text amendments ordinance. And again, I congratulate Dan for getting ordinance in a sentence with six words twice. And I would, I would move that.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Dietrich. Any discussion?
At least he spelled it right, because that would be some controversy we don't need.
Congratulations, Dan. You did great. Seeing none, other further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carries four to zero. All right, we were on citizen concerns before. We heard from Budget Director Erickson and Auditor Scaff, but I will open it back up to any other citizen concerns at this time.
Eric Whissing, 3303 Douglas. You could have some sort of teleprompter in here for, for some people, the mics really don't work. You guys are usually easily heard, maybe too well heard, depending on what I'm hearing. But it's a hard building in here, but that's beyond that. Thanks for your work.
Thank you. We will try to talk into the mics better, so we, you're not the-
People who come up to-
Oh, sure.
If you have a teleprompter, this is technology. That's why we need these power plants. One of the reasons, AI.
Thank you.
You'll be replaced.
Thank you. All right, any other citizen concerns? Okay, moving on then. Item 10 is board concerns.
AI will never replace politicians because people are always going to want a person to blame. Just for the record.
I would love to see AI try to get three cows that have been lost and 160 acres for a week. So I would, actually would have welcomed that yesterday in, in a big way, so bring it on.
I just want to thank Dan Priestley for all of his hard work on this and for his research and everything that he printed out for us. I just want to say thank you again. Good job.
We've kept you guys busy the last couple of years, haven't we? So you guys have done a nice job. And I, and I appreciate everybody that, that came out, the last three meetings and all the zoning hearings as well. And then, you know, I don't think it's, it's, I always kind of frown when we have ordinances on the agenda during the fair because it's a lot going on. But it's also a great opportunity to visit with people. And when you're at the fair for six days, you communicate with a lot of people. And I would have to say that overwhelming, it was overwhelmingly positive, was, you know, a lot of questions, you know, seeking clarity, but was very positive. And I think, you know, people understand what heavy industry means to especially middle-class, blue-collar jobs here in the county. And I think that that's, for me, that's all I'm looking for, is how can we protect and continue to, you know, grow Woodbury County? And energy is, is a huge portion of that, and cheap energy is a huge portion of that, so. But it was a great week at the, the fair. I think I saw, Matthew, did you make it there? I think you were busy. Michelle was there and Dave and Kent. So it was, it was a great time, had great weather, they had great turnouts, record crowds for grandstand events. So that's a wonderful thing, so.
Yep. And I appreciate all the volunteers that make that fair happen. The, the parking lot was full, the grandstands were full. It was a beautiful week for it. And without all those volunteers to make that one week happen, it's, it's a lot. So thank you to them.
Absolutely. No, absolutely.
And Cassie Loomis, how Cassie Loomis organized all of that at the, for our booth. And Mr. Bob Henderson, everybody that worked out there did a great job, so.
And if they need volunteers for the open class next year, Michelle? We got a judge sitting right down here, I think. A judge in the making. All right, any other board concerns? Seeing none, we adjourn.